The Chairman of the Lee County Board of Commissioners calls the meeting to order. This is a work session to work on the proposed budget for fiscal year 07, 08. This is not a public hearing. Our public hearing will be held next Monday at 7:00 at the old courthouse. Those that have an interest in the budget and want to speak to your allocation that's in the budget may do so. The Chair will recognize you for your comments. We propose to start at the front of the budget booklet and go through it in order. Our first order of business will be our invocation with the power of Ed's pleas. I am the Father. We thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us for this season of the year when everything is seemingly coming to life. Father, you are so good to us all of our days, and we thank you for being our work session today. Father, I pray that you would bless each of the commissioners. Bless those, Father, who have an interest in the budget. And I pray, Father, that we might do that which is right as far as our citizens are concerned. We thank you for giving us this opportunity to be a leader in the community. So I pray that you'd give us the wisdom to do it in the very best possible way that we can. We would remember those, Father, on the foreign fields today who have their lives on the line. Pray that you would bless them, not only bless them, but bless their families. Father, we thank you for the United States of America, the state of North Carolina, and for Lee County. It's a pledge and a privilege to be a citizen of each one of them. For it's Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I'm going to recognize the Chairman of our Finance Committee and also our Chief Financial Officer to, I guess, conduct a meeting. So I turn it over to Mr. Reeves this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Each of every budget books will go in order of the budget book except for the paper performance. Paper performance, we want to address that issue. I think there were some commissioners that had some questions or interest in it. We'll get that out of the way.
All right. Is there anyone that wants to speak to the paper performance over from the committee?
The reason I had it on the agenda for Monday is not so -- I just wanted to know how it's going. I know whenever you make a major change in the way you compensate your employees, there's going to be some hiccups or whatever. And I just wanted to know basically how it's transpired. So at some point, I do want an update on that. I think Ms. McGee was ready to present that to us on Monday.
Yes.
You can go ahead and do that.
I can.
Before you present, I did want to say that it should be noted that this board did take a position that there were no guarantees of removal with it, to see where it ends and see how it goes. And we're all sort of getting a feel for it, so what you hear can be what we hear for the first time. There's no guarantee it will be funded.
I wouldn't make mention of the fact that this session is being video cutting. Camera's right over there. So just to let you know.
Are they moving?
No.
Okay. Good. We'll go camera away.
I'll leave that one to you already.
We started it this past year, and pretty much the policy says that all benefited employees are required to do a paper performance. So the benefited employee is the employee that receives the benefits that the county offers. And one thing about the paper performance, the employee is supposed to meet the requirements of a present position before they can take part in the performance plan. That's expected of them. So each employee goes through several things that they have to do to get to the point where they're qualified for an increase. We have like four categories. The first category is does not meet requirements of the job. Employees have to meet requirements of the current job. And then we have meets requirements, you're doing your job, you're doing what you're getting paid for. And we have exceeds requirements and outstanding performance. So those are the categories that we use. We do -- this year, we rewarded employees who meet require -- exceeds requirements and outstanding. The exceeds requirements will get a 2% increase, and the outstanding requirements, they'll get a 5% increase. Other than the Sheriff's Department, their outstanding will be 4% because if they came into the program, it won't get waived. But the meets requirements will begin by having a performance evaluation of every employee who came in. Every employee has to go through a performance evaluation for you to start. And they have to be noted as that they are meeting requirements of the job. If they're not, then the supervisor will have to do a plan with that employee to get them back to where they knew to meet requirements of the job. And if you're not meeting requirements, then you are evaluated at each one of those meetings that we have, just to make sure you're getting on track to get your job done. The exceeds requirements, those will be evaluated too. Several times during the year, they have to be evaluated. Again, the performance evaluation meeting is the first meeting. The performance plan meeting is where you sit down if you've got a performance plan and submit your plan to your supervisor, and he submits it to your department, and they look at your plan. And that's where you talk about your plan. And then there's a mid-year meeting where we review the plan halfway through to make sure you're on track with meeting your goals. And then we have the final review meeting where the final, where it's looked at to make sure you did meet your goals and all your documentation is in place. So those are the four required meetings. Normally, under the old performance system, you had one performance evaluation once a year. But here, you're really being looked at four times a year under this plan. Pretty much, that's -- filled out a little bit about the plan, but what was handed out to you is how many people participated in the plan and how much money some cost by department. Outstanding, we had 10 people that applied for outstanding in the general population. We had one person that withdrew from the outstanding plan, and we had five that were approved for outstanding and four were declined for outstanding performance review. In the Sheriff's Department, they came in late. They decided to join the plan under the old regime. They weren't going to be in the plan with the new regime. They wanted to be in the plan, so we had to make some adjustments on their dates for this first year. We had two people apply for outstanding in the Sheriff's Department, and the Management Committee will review those two tomorrow afternoon at their meeting. Co-employees that applied for this year of all of our county populations, 15.6% of the population applied. And that's sort of a low number. It's the first year. I think people are kind of filling it out to see how it works. I think we need to tweak it a little bit. We need to look at it more, make the new county manager, we can, and tweak it some. But that's where we are right now today. And the budget numbers, the budgets will be paid out in January. For this fiscal year, it will be $31,620, the cost to pay on the county's budget. And the annualized cost is $63,230 for this budget.
Chair, I would like to mention that this is on top of the COLA.
Yes, so the COLA will be 2.5%.
Those residents who get 4%, that's who get 6.5%.
Yes, they'll get 2.5% in July, and then they would get 4% in June.
Joyce, you're at Moore County. Moore County successfully implemented a paper performance.
We did, but it was a completely different plan. I think Randy was there when we did it in Moore County. What we did, we revamped the whole pay system. And we, for each person coming in and each job, we went through and we established criteria for those jobs where they could advance in the pay plan. They had a step plan here, but they did away with it. There was nothing tied to that step plan. In Moore County, I tied each step, had to have certain requirements to move in the step plan. And when a person got past step five, then we went on a performance review system where the commissioners set aside like a 1% amount of money that the departments could use for merit evaluation for those people that truly did exceed the requirements of the job. But to move in the pay plan, you had to meet certain requirements and educational requirements to move in the pay plan. And that way, people could move through the pay plan. Here, just to let you know, where we have it now, you come in at minimum, and you never move them, because our plan moves with the cost of living. So you're always at minimum like now.
So maybe we need to look at the way this is set up. Is that what you said?
Yes, I shared that with Lisa the other day, what we did. And actually, I still had all my stuff, but I had it on a little memory stick that I did. But it was a good way to balance fairness in moving through the pay plan.
I really like the fact of merit pay. Somebody that doesn't believe that everybody gets the same raise every year because some people, you know, do more than others. So I really want to see us maybe try to iron out some kind of a good merit pay plan. And if the one we have now is not working, then maybe let's see if we can revise it to make it work more.
This is called pay for performance, but it was called pay for performance in Moore County. We were paying you for your experience and your education and your certifications. And then when you got to a certain step, then you got merit pay. But it was a fair way to move. People still got a performance evaluation every year, but they didn't move because they would move in their step based on the qualifications and education. You could stay at one step for three years if you didn't get the certifications that were required to move. And I think that was pretty fair.
We used to have the step plan. In fact, I think it was changed about three years ago. And everyone came in, for instance, most of them came in at step one, and that step plan went through step five. And they were evaluated on their anniversary date each year. And if they were performing successfully, then the department had approved them to go to step two. But once you got to step five, that's as far as it went. And then they started getting longevity after five years. So that was the plan that I mostly been with. So we're actually in new territory, as far as I'm concerned, for merit or performance.
Change is difficult. There's some people that, you know, it's difficult to change. But I really do think that that's a good way for us to go. Maybe we don't have the best laid plan right now, but collaboratively, getting everybody together, I really would like to see this, you know, go further.
Well, as part of the budget process, we're going to have to make a decision whether we're going to fund it this year or not, the $31,620, $31,600. And as Mr. Reeves indicated, when we actually approved the looking into this plan, we did not guarantee that it was going to be funded. Anything else?
Wasn't there something in -- didn't I see something in last year's budget where that was included as my item? It's never been funded, it's never been budgeted.
Joyce, how do you determine the pay grade for somebody that you're hiring? I know you have a range in there, but how do you go about determining, okay, well, this person is down at the bottom, or do you start everywhere at the bottom?
Our policy says that all employees, employees coming in start at the minimum range and otherwise approved by the county manager. The county manager can approve up to minimum. But he cannot go past midpoint. He would have to go to the board to get permission to hire anyone past midpoint. But our policy, we try to stick to our policy and hire people that can handle the management process. Depending, sometimes you can't, depending on the experience that you need, the credentials that you need. Sometimes you might have to go above minimums to get a good person.
And in the announced positions that are open, the minimum salary and the maximum is included.
As opposed to this one.
But you don't just hire them. I mean, I have the minimum salary.
That is our policy, to hire them.
At the bottom.
That's why when we did it in Moore County, we went out and we did a salary survey to find out what the market was paying. And we had it where you could come in, depending on your credentials, the requirements for each step. And if you were a fully qualified person, you could come in at step five technically. If you were fully qualified and you had the years of experience and education and all the needed, you could come in at that step to give us a good experience personally. If you were not, you would come at step one, and you would work your way through the system. You could get tied up in the system if you weren't willing to go out and get those certifications that required of different jobs, like tax assessors and all those kinds of certifications and other things, and health and social services, additional training.
My thinking is just that we pay that, like, and other county's still ours away.
Yes, because we hire at minimum.
Well, I know. I mean, why don't we go and steal somebody else's?
We try, but if you've got policies that says we hire at minimum, it's hard to steal.
Well, that's fine. I mean, if you're looking at it.
We need to look at our competitive rates when we hire. That's why we did what we did, I keep saying, in Moore County, but it took me six months to get that in place, and it cost the commissioners about $900,000 to implement it. But it was well worth it because people were rewarded for their experience, their education, and the certifications that they had. It made hiring more fair because you could look at them and say, yeah, you've got five years, and you've got this and this and this, and we can start you at step three without having to start them at the minimum. And that helped us a lot. Environmental health is one of them. I think they almost dropped a tick when we hired what we did in environmental health, but we had to do that and lay those things on them.
I think we really look at it in real world scenarios like I do at my company. You cannot get somebody to Lee County from Raleigh or Cary or Apex without paying them. And if I paid an artist or a county executive the salary range, the bottom end, I wouldn't be hiring that type of people. So we've got to, I think, we need to think about that as a board, that we want the best and the brightest in our organization. We need to pay for it because it'll come cheap.
What was your participation level down at Moore County? Do you recall? Have you told the number of staff? What percentage participated?
Everybody participated. Everybody was set by the same standards. And you did not even, like, when you got past step five, there was another thing called selling, and that could be a special project that a person could be given a merit. County manager had a merit pot of money. Let's just say that someone did something really outstanding, and they could reward them a one-time merit increase. Well, something outstanding, they received a certain accommodation or something, the county manager could go through the board and award them a merit increase, a one-time merit increase. Everybody was in the step plan from day one, and they came through the process. There are certain criteria for each job in the county.
Well, there are certain positions that was hard to determine a merit range. Yours is one of them, HR. She's got the same thing to do all the time. And she has directives that directs her to do it all the time, the same way. But now, if we had a person in public work that's in charge of picking up sticks at the park, if he picks up more sticks this year than he did last year, he could get a merit range, you know?
Well, I guess I feel everybody, you know, what I really would like to see us do is develop an entrepreneurial thinking, you know, which is so missing in governments today. And I think if, you know, it's going to take a while to transition that over, but even you, you know, would be able to study what other counties and other states are doing with health savings accounts or whatever, anything that, you know, would be a good policy way for us to go to save money. So it's just developing that atmosphere of entrepreneurial thinking that's going to be difficult after, you know, all these years of thinking like a government employee. But, you know, I would hope that we continue to fine tune that and get it to where we are in that situation.
My follow-up question is, what percentage of our people participated in this?
Okay, well, let's continue to think about that and discuss the budget and the involvement.
So I can just go through by department. If you have questions, we'll be allowed to try to ask them, or if there's other information from the letter or the transmission that you have, I'll be allowed to try to answer those. Page 30.
You've got a little presentation in our last meeting.
Which tab area are we in?
Under Exhibits, page 30. You'll just go down through by department. If you have questions, I'll be allowed to try to answer them.
I want to back up just a step. The slide you had in your, you presented this to us. I guess I was really surprised to find out that we only had a 14% increase in our taxable base. Everybody I've talked to has had such a massive increase in their valuation that I guess my question is, is this a conservative estimate, or how comfortable are we that this is what our, this is only a 14% increase?
I've talked to a lot of people whose increase has been less than that at the same time.
That's my next question then. Are there areas of the county where property valuations went down considerably?
I have not talked to Lisa Faulkner in Tax to find out what happened area by area. They have held back some for the potential appeals. So we feel like what is held back is a good number at this point. I'm hesitant to adjust that until we know. They, appeals, requests for reviews picked up latter part of last week. A lot of people are calling on Friday asking for extensions. They told me before, can get them in the mail, they tried to get them, I mean, they could take. I do know there's a large industrial that is looking, bringing an appraiser in to check their value, their property, to see if they do need to appeal.
If there's some way we can analyze this, because I would be curious to know that if there are pockets within the city of Sanford where valuations went down, but outside the city limits, that it went way up. And I'm sensitive to the county's issues. I live in a county district that's outside the city, and, you know, the public safety with the police and fire are very important to them. And when I look at our taxable base for the county, 56% of that's outside of the city of Sanford, 44% is in the city of Sanford. So I am sensitive to some of the things that they want to see, like the increased spending for, you know, the Sheriff's Department and, so I'd like to have a way to know, you know, if we could break that down as to what's real property, what's personal property, and if there's pockets, you know, that did go down in value.
Personal property is staying. I can't take you that across the county. Personal property is staying, and that comes from several, mainly from what? Having found a good stuff that's been in construction and progress into use, and it's taken several years to get it into use. So all of a sudden, you've been carrying it full value, and it goes into use, it goes back to depreciation from day one. So all of a sudden, you have a large drop in that value, and we did have an overall drop in personal property this year.
Would it be possible to get us that analysis? Thank you. Then, looking at this, Lisa, you know, the tax revenue, if what you're doing here is taking the taxable base, dividing by 100 times 0.75, I came up with a million more than what you show here. Was that this day?
You have to take a lot of these separately, and you have to use a collection rate.
Okay, so it's taxable, okay. Explain that. And in our sales tax projections, a 3% increase is about all that we can expect there?
That's what the state is recommending, and that's basically about all we're seeing overall this year. You see, so if you look at those analyses you've given, you've seen very little growth in the 1%, but more in the others, and that's the shift of the food tax and stuff. It's been two several times during the year. So they recommend a 3%. So that's what we do. We've been very aggressive the last couple of years at 5, and this year it's borderline.
Whether or not we're going to make the 5%?
Whether or not we'll make the projections.
Will we make 4%?
You don't be close to the 5, but you may not be 100%. You may see in one area and not in another because of that shift.
And, you know, I'll be honest, I was really expecting our revenue neutral rate to be down about 68 cents. You know, this was surprising that it came in at, you know, so much.
That's what was taught last year.
And we thought that possibly it would be close to that, but our estimates did not measure up to what we thought they were going to be in their growth. Commercial did not measure up. And of course, the way they figure the value of that property, it does depend on where it's located, because they establish neighborhoods, and they go back and see what a piece of property is sold for in that neighborhood. And I think they go back to about five years, and then they come up with a valuable property that you get.
I don't have a problem with the methodology. I like the methodology. I think anytime we can get things as close to market value as we can, that's a fair way to do it. But I just would like to know if there's areas that significantly went down in value?
Well, I would imagine that there are areas inside the city that would, for instance, maybe Sanford, but at the same time, there are other areas that are within the city limits that have been annexed especially, where there was an increase.
And I guess my concern is if there's, most of the areas outside of the city have really gone up in value, and they're paying more taxes, you know, they're going to expect to see increased spending in public safety and some of those things that are unique to them also. So that's.
And of course, those of us who live in the city, we pay city tax plus we pay county tax. I'm really interested in that, because I live in the city.
I just ask the Chairman to see if you can get Mr. Paul to come down, maybe to address some of the questions. Anyone else have sex and they'd like to raise a question or concern?
We said that we were going to follow the schedule all the way through in order. It's kind of got sidetracked to begin with. How many departments do we have here that want to speak, Commissioner Ray? Why don't, can we just go ahead and let you speak?
Just one second. Here we go.
Mr. Chairman? Can I make a motion? I'm looking here at our timeframe, and today's the only day we have scheduled for a budget work session. This is scheduled for a public hearing on May 21st and an adopted budget on June 4th. I'm going to move that we schedule another public hearing sometime after June 4th. Several reasons. We've got so many people who are barely having time, getting used to their new tax valuations. We've got one entire district whose taxpayers aren't represented at all during this process. And so I would like to, I move that we schedule a second public hearing for an evening session. I've got so many people say I'd come to that meeting, but I can't take off work. So I make the motion that we schedule a second public hearing sometime after June 4th.
You have the right to make a motion, but our public hearing next Monday on the 21st is going to be at 7:00, 7:00 PM. I won't be here today.
We typically have allowed for that after our first public hearing. I have one in the evening. We'll announce the second one during our day. There are people who work at night just to, for the day. So we cover both sides without a formal declaration of a motion to do it.
Well, this is not a typical year because we have District 2 that's not being represented. So that's why I'm making this motion.
You know, I do want to say, and that's your opinion, all of us are elected to represent Lee County, period. Lee County, period. We happen to have districts because of some issue problems in getting elected in the past is how we arrived at districts. But your district representation did nothing more than a formality for the electoral process and not for representation of the county citizens. It's all a representative.
That's your opinion. I think the.
No, it's a matter of fact.
The voters in District Two, the taxpayers, would feel a little bit differently, thinking that this entire board is looking out for, for their interest. So, all I did, all I'm doing is requesting a second public hearing.
And all we're saying is that we have one scheduled for the evening, and we'll schedule the next one at our regular meeting during the day.
Do we have, do we have agreement here that we will have a second public hearing?
There are three of us on the board that were elected by all of the citizens of the county, who do not represent a decent district, who represent everybody.
All of us, all of us do, all of us.
All of you do.
And I feel very strongly that I represent all the, the citizens of the county also, but I do think that there's, you know, twenty-one percent to be exact of, of the taxpayers and voters who don't really have a voice here. So, all I'm saying is, is I want to be assured that we're going to have a second public hearing, but the only public hearing we have is not going to just be on May twenty-first.
You're going to mandate that we do that?
Am I going to mandate it?
I think, I will make your motion. All right, the motion is on the floor, that we hold a, a second public hearing after the twenty-first. We voted up or down. I'll vote in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Any votes say no, we've already, I need to hand, hand the vote.
I'm, I'm unclear. Are we, are we having a second one or not, in regards to the, the scheduled meeting?
The only one I've seen published on the schedule is the one on May twenty-first, and I just want to be assured that we are going to have one. I see no way we can have our budget adopted by June fourth. There's just too many variables here. So, I want to make sure that we have another public hearing on the budget, preferably after we, you know, have had the first public hearing, but sometime after June fourth.
All right, I've taken a vote. I was not able to determine whether the vote passed or not, so we will vote by shovel hands those in favor.
Wait, 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 let me at least guess. Now, I have no problem with the public hearing. What I have a problem with is, is how you're trying to approach it. We're having one according to the schedule, tentative schedule that we put out every, yeah, every budget. So, we have one on the twenty-first, and depending on the turnout and the kinds of questions that come from that, if we choose to have a second one, then what prevents us from having it on the fourth, which will be the following meeting?
Because it seems that June fourth is the date that you want to make the decision on the other commissioner, and I, I think it's very important that people from that district have some kind of a voice. And to be honest with you, I have studied this thing. This is intimidating for even somebody like me, so I hope this is not going to be the only work session that we have. And, you know, I won't have the answers to all my questions by May twenty-first, so I'm thinking that there's other questions that are going to come up. My purpose in having the other public hearing is, you know, to give people more of a chance. They got their tax valuations laid. I just think a common courtesy is to, let's allow a second public hearing.
Can I ask you again, what is wrong with June the fourth?
That's the day we're supposed to be coming up with our other commissioner, so I think it needs to be sometime after June fourth.
Tell me just why that interferes with having a public hearing. You won't seat the person on the board, so tell me how it interferes with having a public hearing.
It's just a matter of representation on the board.
Come on, question, sir.
Yeah, although in favor of the motion that another public hearing take place after June the fourth, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Just do it that way. Uh, we'll just go that way. Motion passes, you may must. Come on.
Commissioner Schick, do you still have tax questions that you want to raise, Ms. Faulkner?
Lisa, you want us, yeah, come on.
Well, let's see if she has any questions, Mr. Faulkner.
Lisa, my, my question was, do we have a way of drilling down on that taxable base as far as, you know, what areas are up in real estate value, you know, what are down, and, and being able to determine personal property tax base from real property tax base? Is there some kind of a printout that we can get for that?
I could do a printout on the real estate part, like by fire districts, if you value working down maybe that way.
That'd be good, because I'm on the fire advisory board too, and they're going to be, you know, that would be of interest to them too, so.
I could give it to you on the real estate side of Mary Yow build, because she would have to get the printout on the personal property side on the motor vehicles. But with ours, keep in mind, we've got approximately eight hundred and sixty-seven appeals as of this morning.
How many?
Eighty-sixty-seven, which is wonderful, I think. I mean, that's not.
That sounds like a lot, so you're saying that that's a lot too?
I'm saying that is. Man, fifteen hundred is a lot. Yeah, we were expecting between fifteen hundred and three thousand, so we've got eight hundred and sixty-seven. So, we may end up with around, you know, approximately a thousand.
These, these are inquiries.
Informal appeals.
Not at this time, those that will go before the board.
V and R. Now, we will weed, weed these down, send out revised notices on these. Once we make any, any corrections in our office, we'll send out a revised notice. We're telling them about, give us about three weeks to get all the reviewing done. Send out revised notices, and then the ones who still are not happy are the ones who may have not come to us to begin with, that are waiting just for the board being on, that we don't know exactly how many will go to the board being on. But, and our appeals have been minimal from what we expected. We've probably already reviewed about three hundred of those, three to three fifty, so we're almost halfway through reviewing, and I'm hoping we can get a lot more of the reviewing done now that, because we asked them to respond to us within thirty days, you know, and the thirty days was basically up to date. So, now we can start focusing on reviewing and get that out. So, I don't know how much that's going to change. The figures I could print out, you know, print out today, but you don't understand today, but we still have a few more changes on the endpoint of the views.
I think the reports, if you can give to me based on, you know, fire district and, I could see personal property as opposed to real property, without it taking a lot of your time, but, and so, are we pretty confident that the projected tax base we have is going to be stable? Could it go up? Could it go down?
I don't think it's going to go up. It may go down. There are appeals that raise their tax, there are appeals.
We've had a few, not, not many, most of them are on the lower, but we have had a few that have been because it's, it's too low, but at this point, it's kind of, you know, I don't know what to say, that that's going to be. I mean, we can do an estimate off of, maybe percentage wise from what it was in the, in the last year valuation.
We're not going to hold you to any of that, because whatever it is, is what it is on that time.
And the reason this started this is I was surprised that our taxable base wasn't a lot larger than it was. It was only a fifteen percent increase, so, or fourteen percent increase. So, Lisa was saying that large, a lot of, well, a reason for that is our personal property taxes, and it was, is high. So, I'd just like to, to see both of those together, you know, just because I'm that way.
You want to see the prior values versus the current values?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We've got the current values broken down by fire district between the categories, but it may take a little bit. But you also have to realize is that there's growth built into here outside of the rebound. Naturally, you have, you have people building homes, you have people adding on to their businesses and stuff, so you can't automatically, when you get those numbers, say, it may show up that an area has gone up seventeen percent, but you've got to be able to back out the growth on that. You may not be able to break that down by district. I was able to get that countywide when, when I figured the revenue neutral and percent true. If, she was just pointing out to me, Mary Yow was out the rest of the time that week, so they hang that hard week before I can give that to you.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. She wrote the grant report on the table. Give it to the management first.
Thank you, Lisa.
Commissioner Lamont says.
No, one thing here. The panel that I handed out was from an annual banquet we had in Johnston County, which includes Johnston, Lee, and Hardy. And if you flip to the paper clipped area and pull that one sheet, the areas of concern that, that I have concerns, concerns us quite a bit. Urgent repair, this is, this is for elderly, for those that are handicapped in some way where they can come in and repair flooring and even roof damage or anything pertaining to that. Also, it could help with the handicap situation of doing a deck for someone at a house. Also, it takes care of a number of things that's within the household. I do want to say this, that this is one of the best programs we have going, and as you see here, in two thousand and six, there were four homes that were repaired already to date. We're already at four. We're going to exceed that. This was last week's report that I got. The weatherization covers a multitude of things. It covers any type, what they, what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll pressurize the house, find out where it leaks, or, you know, going through the house or whatever like this. They completely weatherize the house if there's something that needs, so far as the strips around doors and windows and things of that nature. They also come in and do repairs on some types of plumbing and things of this nature that would help someone that cannot come in and have that done typically on, you know, low income. But our main focus is, is on the handicapped, the aged, and as the baby boomers are coming in, those numbers are increasing. And what you see is HARP, that is heat and air replacement or repair. Last year, it was ninety. This year, to date, is already ninety. We're going to surpass that. That is going to be a, a right, a high number. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped down one. Six and twelve. We've already, we've already done twelve. Excuse me, but.
Commissioner Lamont, is there any way to find out on these projects, how many are actually in Lee County, how many are in Hardy County, how many are in Johnston?
That's what is Lee County.
This is Lee County.
Those three that I have marked are Lee County. What money that come from Lee County stays here in Lee County. And we do a multitude of things. We have the head start here. Those numbers are, are consistent. We don't have another building to take any more children into the head start program. The crisis, I mean, the main thing I'm focusing on right now that we see the most need for are those threes are highlighted in yellow. The HARP, the weatherization, and urgent repair. And I'll say this, on the weatherization, when they come in and find out, you know, and do these tests on, on a home to weatherize it, they also come in and they give, they don't, they also give it, they also install smoke detectors, they also put up carbon oxide detectors, and they also use energy efficient fluorescent lights, the new style. They're giving six bulbs for each home, and this cuts down on a lot of energy. And in that package that they leave with the home, there's energy saving tips people go by.
All these are healthy people.
Most, most, all these are elderly or they're disabled. So, what, what I'm asking the board to do is to approve two thousand dollars for Johnston Lee Hardy to work on the additions, additional homes that we'll be taking on.
You talking about next year's budget?
This, this budget we're working on right now.
Well, we're, we give twelve thousand dollars of taxpayer money to that, so we're, but I'm not sure what you're saying about the two thousand.
The two thousand would be added.
To the twelve thousand?
Twelve request fourteen.
Right, yeah, exactly. It's actually eleven thousand what it's been being, and the request was for twelve, so that's six hundred dollars.
Well, these are all very worthy causes. I just question whether taxpayers of Lee County, whether that's something that every taxpayer should be funding or not. You know, I'm not questioning that they're not worthwhile projects, but, and it's a drop in the bucket in this budget, but.
It is. Definitely is. And if, if you have some time that you'd like to spend, I can take you around and show you quite a few of them, but I think it would change your mind right quick. I've been on this board seven years, and I've seen what, going to these meetings and going out and seeing some of the homes has done for citizens of the county. I've also been to some in Hardy County and a couple in Johnston County. So, I see the need for it, and that's the reason I want to stay on this board. It is a worthwhile project, and the, the staff, they invest thoroughly to make sure that people are qualified and receive this, this assistance. And as Mr. Lamont said, they conduct tests, things to ensure that if they do go in and fix Lee, that it's, will be fixed, you know, after they go back. Exactly. And I, and I want to say this as well, so far as just throwing money at something like this, to me, it's really not throwing it, because if you look right behind that paper clip, every one of these is advertisements, and every county went around, members from the board went around to different businesses in, in Johnston Lee and Hardy, and this is a little fundraiser. So, they're not sitting back, you know, just asking for money. They're getting out and working for money as a way to support these type programs. That's their seed money. So, they're matching. They're matching some money.
We have Lee County.
Got Lee. I've got mine in there. You've got yours in there? There's, there's a number of those that's in Lee County that advertise, you know, with the agency, because they know what good it does for the people in this county.
Okay, Mr. Lamont, are you making a motion that we had?
Yes, sir. I will.
Changing from, changing from twelve thousand to fourteen thousand, the allegations of Johnston Lee Hardy.
Yes, I, I didn't make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, before you approve, I would ask that we do a consolidation of all the requests to maintain the list of those changes, and we'll hold them motions at this time. Will you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. Well, we'll keep a running pair for any change that we make.
On, on this, pardon, just one second, Mr. Reeves, on this, if you just, there's about three or four pages here that tells you exactly what these programs do. If you don't understand it, it'll explain it. It'll tell you how many that it. It'll tell you how many that it serves. So that's the reason I paper clipped this sheet with this right here was to let you be aware that there is information in there just other than a few ads to let you know what goes on with Johnston Lee Harney Community Action. Thank you.
And we do have one of the first, maybe the first director of Harney, uh, Lee Community Action, Mr. Powell, Bobby Powell, he was the leader of that way back, the one bits of the year.
Oh, and that, that grant, just to get to mention, we did apply a, a grant, uh, for eight homeless homes, uh, those here in Lee County. That was a ten thousand dollar grant sometime last year, I believe, or a year before. Last year, I forget. Last year. So that was met.
We need to make new bonds, we said we would do a competition, so we have another obligation.
Right.
Should we hear from some of the people who are here?
We're, we're, we're all going to go to the panel. Just want to make sure everybody has a copy of the nonprofit budget request that was gave out. That's what we'll, uh, consideration. Who's in a hurry? Nobody. Sheriff, come on up, Sheriff.
It's good to be here. Appreciate you letting me speak. Just want to go on record about our, our budget request this year, upcoming year. Um, we, we've asked for increases as far as salaries or concerns, but then we have adjustments that we feel like we need to make there, also equipment, but mainly personnel. And we are asking for five positions. It's four control deputy positions that would increase our current number per shift from four to five. We feel like that would be an adequate number. We're also asking for a crime scene technician to help with our evidence collection and maintaining that, and also the crime scenes, which would free up our detective division to be able to get out in the community and do more investigative work. So we, I, I, I just want to go on the record, asking for these, uh, what we believe are needs, and I, I do, we do need all of what we're asking for, so just please take that into consideration.
Sheriff, do you want to, do you want to, um, discuss the, the situation you ran into the other day, of course, to your command of the county?
Yeah, we had a, uh, situation that ha- happens quite frequently. We had a, it was on the weekend, and we had a, um, we, we don't, we don't like our numbers to ever get below three, the, the uniformed officers that are working. And of course, we have people that are out on sick leave at times, on vacation leave, holiday leave, and so sometimes we only have three. We had a, um, situation where two of our deputies were tied up, and the one that was not tied up got called and deposed, and there was nobody there to help him, because we were short-staffed and everybody was out on calls, and we were fortunate that the Sanford Police Department was monitoring our channel, and they were, uh, were nice enough and professional enough to send two of their uniformed officers out to assist the deputy. So, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to make it better for the citizens of the county as far as our response time and us preventing crimes, but we're also trying to make it better for the deputies, because they, they do need help.
Let me ask you, Sheriff, on, on that note, do, do the Sheriff's Department now have a working relationship with the police department? I mean, that's everyone, uh, as far as like the mutual aid, like the, the fire departments have, uh, with each other within the county, as well as departments, right across the line? Y'all have that?
We're working on a, we're working on a, a written mutual aid agreement currently, but it's an unwritten rule that if they need help, we're going to help them, and if, if we need help, they'll come out and help us. So we do have that, that relationship.
But that channel, I mean, with, with the radio systems, uh, with the Sheriff's Department as well as the police department, y'all kind of listen out and judge?
Yes, yes, we do. Like I said, if, if we need help, they've always been good to come and help, and, and I'm sure that's going to continue and vice versa. However, they do have quite a bit more work in than we do, so we're more apt to, to be in need than they are, but we'll, we'll help, we'll help each other.
Go ahead. Have you, um, I say this because I remember you, us campaigning at the same time, um, and have y'all, what kind of grants have y'all applied for? I know, you know, you talk about, uh, grants and stuff and everything, but what, have y'all, have y'all been successful in ascertaining?
We have a, a pending grant currently for about twenty-six thousand dollars that will help pay for equipment. It's an equipment grant, but that, that's not been approved yet.
Federal, federal, state?
State. There's also another grant that's, uh, coming open, I believe, in the fall, but it's, uh, for, for officers, so we're going to be looking at that as well. We are going to be pursuing as many grants as we can. I mean, we feel like if the state or federal government's going to, going to hand out money, we need to be able to receive any of it if we can. So we, and we'll keep you informed about, about that.
In, in reference to the grants, uh, we received, uh, thing from, uh, Representative Love's office, referenced gang violence grant money. Does the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, or the SROs apply for that? Uh, I say here that Lee County didn't get any money, and, and, uh, the city of Dunn received a hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars, five cents.
The grant that I just spoke of for equipment is a subsection of that, of that grant, so we are, we are tapping into some of that money. And I know Dr. McCormick's here. I believe that Dolly Cole has applied for some of that money. I'm not, I can't speak for her on that, but I think she did apply for some of that. But, but the, the pending equipment grant that we have is, is a subsection of that, that grant. So we are, I do have someone on staff that's monitoring what's available. We will pursue as much of that as we can.
They're, they're actually searching for grants.
Yes, yes.
Uh, it's some additional information that you gave to me last week. This calls for service. This does not include, uh, servant papers, right?
No, sir. No, it does not.
You know what I'm talking about, Randy?
Yes, sir, I do. I do. That does not include them.
Okay, now, if you added the servant paper to that, do you know about how much, how many calls it would do?
Is it the civil, the civil area?
Yeah. Well, it'd be very easy to figure. I don't have those figures, but it'd just take me finding out how many papers we've served since January first, and how many calls we've got since January first, and just combine the two.
Well, I thought the number was kind of low, and I, I didn't, I figured that the servant paper did not include it in there.
Well, also too, you know, um, that, those call for service, uh, total that you've got there, uh, they also do not include, uh, those self-initiated or the deputies out there, and he actually is already on the scene before there's a call for the sheriff's office for a response. Also too, um, you know, of course, this goes with any county, there's, uh, there's people that doesn't, they don't call us, you know, for certain things that we deal with. But as far as, to answer your question about the civil papers, that's not included, and I could get you those figures if you need them.
I'm pretty good with that.
Okay.
Don't waste your time.
Right, yeah. We wouldn't get you that.
Sheriff Carter, I, I read in the paper that you were asking for seven hundred and some, seven hundred and seventy thousand or whatever is what you were requesting. Um, and I guess, I'm looking here at the public safety where you said the sheriff's department request is a six hundred sixty-one thousand dollar increase. You said that does not include what we're laterally transferring from the health department to the jail, is it? I mean, you're not including that as part of his increased budget, because that's a lateral move, isn't that?
Right, not in the sheriff's department, that's in the jail.
Okay, so here, um, maybe I'm not interpreting this right. Is this what he had requested, or is this what you were proposing?
He requested six hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars more for the sheriff's department than was requested prior year, or it was recommended, adopted prior year.
And what, what was your recommended?
I recommended an increase of three hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And that include two new positions, right?
Includes two deputies.
That's not the jail?
Does not include the jail. The jail increases two hundred thirty-nine, nine eighty-seven.
Well, I will say this, when I was campaigning, um, and I wasn't campaigning in Deep River, but somebody that was, was somebody in my area had her homeowner's insurance canceled because she had three break-ins in her house, so completely lost her homeowner's insurance. Some people in my area were paying more than they should have been for their homeowner's insurance because of break-ins in the area. So, you know, it, we also have to look at what the cost to the taxpayers is by not having adequate coverage. I will say this, I hope there's no criminals watching on TV, but if we had a smart gang, two smart gangs, they could go up in the Deep River area, start something, have everybody have to go up there to respond, and then they could wipe out some of the big neighborhoods in the southern part of the county. We just don't have enough people there. And I, I just, I'm going to feel very strongly, I'm going to recommend that we give more than three hundred fifty-three thousand. That was one of the marijuana busts you took, right? The big plants growing, that was three hundred. And by the way, what's that going to bring in for a drug, uh, asset forfeiture, whatever it is? What's the federal income tax on the two big marijuana hydroponic things that you?
Well, I think total is going to be over a hundred, a hundred thousand.
I don't know that exactly.
Well, you got to collect the money.
Yeah, which is another challenge, but we think, we, we feel certainly we'll get a good portion of that, but the taxes combined, both combined should be over a hundred thousand.
But we, do we own these houses now? Do we?
Well, that's, no, we don't, but that's, we, we are working with the state authorities in, in collecting those, that, those taxes, so we'll be aggressive in that area, I'm sure.
I'm talking about the property. I'm talking about seizing the property. Who seized the property?
Well, that, that would be up to the state revenue. Uh, if they, if they have to, to satisfy the taxes, then, then that could happen. That, that would be up to me.
It's complicated.
But I think we're on the right track. You start taking away the toys and the properties of some of these drug dealers and, you know, it's the other costs here too. I've asked for a report on substance abuse, especially for drug use here, you know, where we need to spend more money on, and I've gone through the jail, and most of those people that are there should not be in the jail, they need to be held in mental health facilities somewhere. Um, I think I read that in your report also. But the cost to the county taxpayers for, you know, substance abuse cases and whatever, if we can get rid of the source, you know, the drugs, then I think we really need to spend our money there. And, you know, I'm going to be recommending that, um, we get more than, than, than what's proposed here. We're going to have to find some luck to take out somewhere, but I, I think we need more than this.
You see our dilemma in regards to, you're going to have Dr. McCormick come up in here and say, say the exact same thing that you said, in that, you know, that, that the kids, catching them early and spending, spending the money to catch them early on education will reduce their job and, and the same thing Mr. Powell's going to say. I mean, and, and I'm not trying to be flippant, I'm just saying, everybody's got legitimate needs, and it's a very difficult thing to cross that line, you don't have those. And I hope y'all understand, I hope everybody understands where we're coming from, sitting here behind this desk. You know, it's, it's, it's not an easy decision.
Uh, Sheriff, put your own spot here, maybe. Uh, the things that were not covered, that were taken out of your budget, what's the most important thing that you would like to see put back?
The crime scene technician position.
Crime scene investigator.
Because that, that would alleviate, or would help our detective, detective division, excuse me, considerably. And, uh, of course, the two uniform positions would help our uniform.
Well, and that crime scene investigator, uh, he would be available to answer other calls if, if called for help.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
And actually, he'll just come out and work with detectives at the scene to secure any of the evidence, uh, the processes, and get it to the, to your office there on up to, to whatever agencies.
Departments are moving towards that, because it, it, you know, you, you can get a lot of jams with evidence, and it, and it allows your department to be able to deal with evidence a lot better, and also you have somebody that can work crime scenes, and it would free up your detectives to get out and do detective work. So that, that would be, if I had to ask for one thing to be added, that's what it would be. I mean, I, I hope we can get it all, but you asked a question, and I answered one.
We want, we want, we want you to be the, the very best you can be.
I understand.
Uh, and, uh, you know what it's going to take for you to be very best. Whether we were able to fund, I wish we could fund this every penny that you ask for, but I think you understand, we're not going to fund every penny that you ask for, but I think we ought to start working on the things that are needed first, and then add these other things on. It's, it's...
It would be something like a, a phase, if we can get, you know, a, a good amount of the needs taken care of, work with you, open a phase system, you know, for the rest of it. But I got to say, I got to say, it's been one heck of a job done, uh, you know, through the law enforcement, uh, that I've, that I've noticed, and, uh, you can pick up the paper, hear it on the news every single day. So, I mean, it's, it's a job being, uh, getting out there and doing it, and having the resources to do it.
How's your immigration task on the thing?
Nice. All right. We are waiting to hear from the federal government about our training slots. We have applied to, I believe, five slots in school, if it's four slots. Four, four. And as soon as we hear, um, about the training and when we can get that, we're going to send our people to that, and then we'll know more about what, what details once we get through that phase. So it's going to take us about a year to get it up and running the way we want it.
Any available funds attached to that?
Um, the training is, is free. We'll borrow grants to, to fund it in the future. I, I can answer that. We'll, we'll be looking to see if there's grant available. But what that's going to do is going to give our detention facility the ability to monitor everyone that goes through to see if they're here legally. If they're not, then the deportation process can be started.
Do you work with anybody in the county in regard to grant money?
Um, we have, uh, contacts with the county office, but I have somebody that, that, uh, does that with the sheriff's office.
Hey, my, my fear in regard to, to, we need some hand-to-hand there, because if, if you guys get some grant money from federal state or something for set position, and then some of it, you know, you get down the road a little bit, and then the rest of it is backed up by county funds, you know, we, finance director, county magistrate, to be aware of that.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that you're, that you're in the loop as far as I'm concerned. We definitely understand that.
Okay, anything else?
I've just got one other thing. Uh, instead, you sent a request from, uh, for some employee salary adjustments. Uh, basically, what that is, is, you know, this employee's has been with the sheriff's office for many years. Um, some that I didn't understand, but just for instance, I've got a, I've got a captain who's been with the sheriff's office for over twenty-two, twenty-three years. Under the classification of his title, he is a captain, but he makes the same thing as a lieutenant over the detective division. Didn't understand why that was done, but however, uh, he, by him being classified in the same class as the lieutenant, it's held him back from being able to get the raises that I thought he could have gotten through the years to have brought his salary up to where I think he should be making, based on our other captains within our department. But I just ask, you know, that, that you look at the salary increases, um, you know, to, to see if we can, uh, help those long-term employees, and then a couple that were brought in under, under some pretenses that we did through the... the, past county managers.
Yeah, I understand the third question about what you're just talking about there. We are.
This is.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you, Captain, have you had an opportunity maybe to sit down with, in my resource manager and go through some of this, to?
The salary increases?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And you get an, an explanation?
Well.
And actually, we got what you're looking for.
Right, right. Well, the explanation that, that I was given first, in other words, how we can make this happen, is that, you know, as George talked about a while ago, is the county policy says that we try to look at hiring someone at entry level.
Right.
But in certain situations where you got someone that has experience in the field that you're asking to come, come aboard with, then we can go up to mid-range with the county manager's approval. Anything higher than that, definitely would need to come through the board. So that's what I was told to begin with. I went to follow up on it three months later, and that's when I was told that it can't happen to try to edit into the budget, and we can fix that stuff. Look at fixing the stuff during the budget. Just, just look at it, because we, we feel like that it would.
Well, I, I wanna assure you that we're, we're looking at it. But there are things that we also have to look at that address other departments, other employees, that we can't do everybody at one time. And we may not be able to do any of them at this time, but certainly we'll look at them.
We wanna bring it to you. Thank you.
Okay, monkey law.
Just go down. Public safety, you go there. You can bring them up. You can always do that. Yeah.
Mike asked to come down because there were some questions about the environmental health fees. And as a matter of fact, I have, for you, a repeat of the table that's in the transmittal letter.
Yeah.
With the percentage, percentage adjustment in those fees.
I asked that list being added because, when we look at it, you know, automatically see how much of an increase it's gonna be. And I didn't know what the help we did as it relates to notifying the public about the increase. So the only change is really the percentage of increase. Everybody understand what I'm talking about?
So basically, you wanna go fully funded?
Partially fully funded.
Partially, partially. Only government can be partially fully funded.
Yeah, let me give you a little background. Environmental health, like many of our other programs, is one of those core functions where the state gives you a little bit of money, tells you, you are, you are gonna carry out state rules and laws and statutes and do it our way. And I think for a budget of about, a total budget of about a half million dollars, the state gives us something to sixty-three hundred dollars to carry that out, which means that the far majority of it is picked up by county tax dollars, with the exception of some, the fees that we charge for the on-site work, that is, the evaluation of lots for septic tanks. This in the past has brought in about sixty thousand dollars or so annually. And my board, especially, I think, after losing a couple of good employees for more county salaries and whatnot, decided that they, they felt that the primary beneficiary of that permit, that homeowner, developer, really needed to pay the majority of that true cost. And so their instructions to myself and Roy tomorrow, who was our environmental health supervisor, was to come up with, adjust those fees where they reflected close to true cost. We didn't really, we wanted to be careful not to get into the accused of a profit motive, so we did, you know, figured out about ninety percent. And this is just for the on-site work. On our board, of course, we have eleven members. One of those is Mr. Jimmy Bachelor, who is a developer, and who does work in not only Lee County, but a lot of our surrounding adjacent counties, too. But he, he felt, he's had no problem with this recommendation. One of the reasons is the other counties have various other fees that contribute significantly to the cost of buildings, such as chowder with a, with an impact fee. And, and so that, he was particularly comfortable with it. So they did vote unanimously to recommend to you all, the commissioners, that we, that we approach, approach self-sufficiency in on-site work. Now, so that would bring in, that would bring in, let's see if I remember, that would bring in about, from sixty thousand, that would raise our fees to about two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So it's about two hundred and thirty-some thousand that we would be bringing in additional next year that the county would not have to pay out of the, at the lower end tax. The only other caveat I would like to say is that the legislature in session now, understand there is a bill, and they may permit us to charge for the food and lodging, that is, the restaurant inspections, too. Now that, whether that happens or not is anybody's guess. And, but what is included in this budget is just the fees for what we can legally charge for. So it's just adjusting close to cost to, here again, let the primary recipient pay the majority of that cost. And that's basically it.
I like the concept. I do.
Our board felt strongly about it.
I do have to ask, what, like on a, so any board, why doesn't it go up in form?
Well, the reason, when we went through that, when Roy and I sat down to go through these, we looked at it, and we, it was a chance to evaluate, how much does time does it really take to perform a function? And I think Roy felt, Roy preferred to be for himself, but that that fee was already high enough, and was probably right at paying for itself already, so we would not decide to do that. So we made that adjustment, too, at the same time. So that, there's not a flat percent. It is a reevaluate, it is a, it is, it is an adjustment to near cost, but with the review of actual time it took to perform these functions.
Just out of curiosity, other than your board, has this been presented in any way public?
We have not had any public review.
That's all.
Yes, sir.
That's the only reason this board has got, so we can see what it's saying, if I can start to call some questions. That's it.
Well, this well, for a bit, going up two hundred percent, does that guarantee the man get water if he drills a well?
I wish it did. I wish it did.
You can spend twelve hundred dollars on a dry hole, and you gonna cost you three hundred more. Is something wrong with this picture?
Yeah, I think.
I guarantee they get billed.
On, let's see, just to give you an idea, listen, I've got water supplies. We do, let's see, we're averaging about three a month. Very, very, very few. Doesn't mean they're not significant in the business.
County system now.
Right.
But that just, that just seems a little bit too much to be. How much, what, what do you have to do to get somebody a well permit, just right there and hand it to you?
For somebody to get a well permit, they've got, come in and apply for a permit, then the person that we send out goes out, and they look at the site, make sure that all is promptly, there are no sources of contamination within so many feet, and make all proper setbacks. Then after the well is constructed, we're to go back and inspect the well before the concrete is poured, and make sure it's constructed properly. And that also includes a bacterial water sample.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So there's significantly more time invested with this process than say, a tactical one?
Big projected revenue that you have in your budget.
These revenues are, are figured into our budget.
Into the new budget.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think, I think a person would be foolish if they got the water line running by the house, and drill a well in them. It's three hundred dollars for a permit, plus the chance they're gonna get in the water, except out of my area. And we know there's water in that line, there's a safety issue in there.
That was the only, that was the only point I wanted to make. That's Powell.
Oh, well, Dan, oh, I thought you had a question from, sorry.
How does your lucky moment?
Well, first, first off, I'm a poor excuse for Dr. Garrett. He is out of town today. He has two boys. He's been trying to put through college for some time. I think he felt like he had earned the right to go and see what he'd been paying for, and see if that degree comes across. But anyway, and Wayne Robinson also had emergency surgery last week. He is our finance officer, and he is on the mend, everything was okay. But he was not able to be here today either. And what I wanted to speak to, did not know, Matt did not know whether or not we would be able to speak today. But what I would, and I am the chairman of board trustees, what I'd like to speak to, is we, last year, were funding one million seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Get this up on glasses work. We also, our total actual expenses last year at the college, the oh-six, oh-seven budget year we end now, was one million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars. So immediately, when you look at those figures, they don't tie. So we had, we had institutional funds last year, which had, we had come about these funds because of Wayne taking every little piece of money we got from everything. He would put it into savings, and we've been doing this for about ten years. We have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we requested this year, two million sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. The county budget proposal for us this year is one million nine hundred fifty-five dollars, one million nine hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-six. Well, that came out this way, for current expenses, seventy-one thousand, ninety-two dollars, which is operational expenses. And fifty-one thousand dollars he gave us also for capital or maintenance equipment, capital budget. Well, if you add those numbers up, and we obviously, somehow or other, we did not communicate properly. Somebody dropped the ball possibly on our end, and we didn't make this understanding. However, our problem is this. If you take seventy-one thousand, nine, seventy-one thousand dollars, and then if you go back and look, we've already used a hundred, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we used out of our own funds. So you can see that leaves us a shortfall for the coming budget before we open the doors of eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. Well, most times when you, you know, present a budget or looking at a budget, hopefully you think, when you ask that budget, that you can live within that budget and do your job within that budget. But we know before we start the year, the next year, that we have ninety thousand dollars short, which means we cannot operate our school next year at the same level that operates this year, if we have no increases of any sort. But we do expect there will be fuel increases, there will be stuff of this nature. Also, we have some county employees who work for us also, so we have to figure in quota for them, two point five, that has to come also. So what we've gotten ourselves into, it seems, that we are only ninety thousand dollars short of being able to do the job as we done it last year. And every time, every year, every semester, our enrollment is increasing. So we know this is not gonna work, and we know it before it starts. What we would like to do is come, is try to fix it, to get it in mind before the year starts, so that we don't have to come back during the year to ask you for more funds, because we will have to come back. There's just no way we can do it. Because our problem is this now, where Wayne and Dr. Garrett and others had been such good stewards of the funds we did have, and made some money to have, we had interest there that we had saved. We don't have that anymore. We spent it last year. The hundred and sixty thousand we put in, we spent on the current operating budget this year. We don't have that hundred and sixty anymore. We have fifty thousand dollars now left, and basically in that fund, which we'd be like, we have to have some money for a real dire emergency that we need to take care of, basically, right at the moment. So that's pretty much what we've gotten ourselves into. And I don't know if that was explained properly to the board, or if the board understood this, or Lisa might not have had it explained to her properly, so she would understand what our dilemma was. And I do know that, I think there is a, a meeting has been scheduled for Dr. Garrett to come and represent himself to Lisa and the chairman, to try to answer any questions. I cannot get too far into the budget, because as a trustee, I don't really deal with that, that much, other than just, I see the figures. But if there are any questions, I, I would not hesitate to try to answer them, because I think I can. I'm familiar enough with most of it that I could. And if I don't know, I'll tell you I don't know. But to give an example, fifty-one thousand dollars in county funds, if that's encumbered specifically for those particular purchases by you, then we can't spend them in operations. So therefore, you know, we've got a problem there. We're still short. So we would like to ask you respectfully to go back and revisit this. And, you know, everybody needs more, and everybody, I don't think anybody comes to the board and said, we don't need more money, but we're gonna do more. But the truth of this matter is, we can, we can authenticate this and show you that there is no way that we can do it with what we're supposedly going to receive at this point. And as I say, I feel certain that we possibly did not convey our message properly in this day. But also, would like to throw out one figure to you, was, you know, you use numbers to justify whatever you want to justify, but statewide, the statewide average for students and community, for community college students, is eight hundred dollars per person. And Lee Canis is five hundred and forty-two. And we graduated last week, two hundred and seventy-eight people that are gonna be contributing back to this county's welfare, its economics base, because they're gonna stay here, work here. And so I don't have to explain the merits of the community college system. All of you know what it does and what it can't do. But I'm, I'm just saying that we do need for you to revisit this, if you would. And as I said, Dr. Garrett will be back in town and be with you people on Wednesday. And if you would, look at it, of course, and give us what consideration you can. And if anybody has any money they'd like to turn back into you, we will take that. Thank you very much.
I will say that I met with Dr. Garrett over at the adult high school a couple weeks ago. I was out of town because of my father's health when they had the last board meeting. So I went and spent two and a half of the fastest hours I ever had, you know, talking. I think there were seven students in there, and most of these are students who public schools, you know, have not been the right fit for them, and they were there, talking about some other things. But I think one of the things moving forward is we need to look at some legislative goals that the board of trustees and the commissioners can work on together. For example, our tuition rate per hour in North Carolina is like only thirty-nine dollars. You look at Virginia, you look at South Carolina, they're seventy-six and seventy-nine. And I firmly believe that the taxpayers should not be funding the continuing operating expenses. I think you should have the ability to raise your tuition a little bit, so that that covers your current operating expenses, and still gives you a little extra money for things. And, you know, even at raising it to what South Carolina and Virginia are, that's like twenty-four hundred 2,400 dollars a year for tuition, that's more than reasonable. So I think moving forward, we need to maybe look at, you know, getting the state organization to allow you to, you know, up the tuition rate a little bit.
Well, in answer to that, one of the things, one of the reasons we have a community college system, and of course, all the politicians who go to Raleigh, they tout the community college system just like they tout many things, that they send you back locally as a mandate with no funds to fund. That's sort of the name of the game. But anyways, the thing is though, that so many of our students, we have a foundation that goes out and makes money, trying to raise money, we do numerous things, we ask for donations. If, the argument against that is, if you raise those fees, the people that we are servicing at a board of schools, at a community college, are the have-nots to start with. The people who, if you charge them 2,400 dollars, you may as well charge them 10,000, because he's not going to be in college at CCCC.
There'll be Pell Grants available for them.
Pell Grants already being used by those people. And there's no, there is no fat there. So I don't think, I don't think our legislature is ever going to really address that problem in that way. I might be wrong. It seems to be a little bit more prone to worry about term limits and such like that for trustees and such, but if the money does not come, now we...
And if all of our students were from Lee County, you know, but they're not, we have them coming from other counties here too, so...
But we also have Lee County students going to Moore County, to everywhere else, Wake Tech, we have them going everywhere, because the system does not allow everybody to teach the same things.
Without due respect, we all wanted to debate that. You want to try and get through this budget session and deal with what we're talking about?
Well, I think the 70,000 was for new equipment for tractors or whatever. And one of the things I think we really need to look at is consolidation of ground services with us, the school, public schools, and CCCC. If there's some way that we can consolidate that so not everybody needs their own equipment, whatever, I think that's...
We have no problem.
Actually, we've looked at that commissioner, and in the past, and there are some statutory reasons we can't do some of it, so...
I thought that was from the city of Sanford and McAllen?
No, education, please. We put some of it, on my other hand again, we've done.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for consuming.
And we, the county manager and I do have a meeting set up with the office there.
What is it? Outside agency of department is on here. School and government.
The school and government both presentation, they just played with answers. If anybody got any questions about the school budget.
I'm there. Any other questions?
With the school stuff, I haven't had a chance to look at all the information, but you guys said you got yours on Saturday, so maybe mine will be in one mail today, so I don't know what questions I could have.
Now, last meeting, we talked about revenue neutral versus what the proposed budget suggests. These are things that you would have to address. This is the difference between the 71 and 75, that's what it should be showing you. And if you were to go to revenue neutral, these things would no longer be available to us at 71 cents. You know, even when I listened to the vice president ship talk about law enforcement, the need to fully fund outside the county, those things are all very true, and they're all very expensive for each person that we have employed. I think, for example, in this request looking budget package, it tells you exactly what the sheriff asked for, and it pretty much gives you a clear picture of what it might cost us. In other words, if we were to address everybody's concern, we'd still be looking at another 4 million dollars we got to come up with. Now, I appreciate hearing positive things all day long, but the reality of it is that you can only get these services one way or another. And we only have one resource right now. So it's a tough call, and that's what we've got to look at. Do we try and do impossible this year and fund everybody at the level they're coming in at, or do we sit down and tighten up our belts and try and do what we think is right for survival?
I think it's a matter of, first of all, defining what is our core services, and really focusing on, you know, what are the core services? And if there's any area in here that, yes, it does benefit a certain group of people or whatever, then maybe to look at partnerships with nonprofits or churches or whatever, perhaps. I don't know if there is any area in here, but I think we need to, you know, public safety is number one, and I heard that over and over and over again in my campaigning, and I think when you're so far behind to begin with, I'm not one that looks at percentage increases, because you could go from one of something one year to two the next year, you have 100% increase, that sounds huge, but it's not when you put everything into perspective. But I just think that, you know, a little bit more time in looking through here to see if there's perhaps anything that, you know, is not a core service. I haven't had the time to do that yet, to ask questions.
Well, but what you want, those are those who have taken time to go through it, to do, just to wait for you to catch up, or provide some other means of catching up.
It's not a matter of me catching up, you've had several years doing this. I've gone through this in great detail, and there's still things that I have questions with.
I'm not going to apologize to you, because I've been here, okay? I'm just simply saying to you that perhaps it may be more beneficial for you to spend more time on it, because I've looked at it, as a matter of fact, I'd be willing to bet, if you look at the real numbers that this board and the boards prior to it have done over the last few years, we've been it bare bones. We've done about as much cutting as we can do without laying people off. We've done some serious, serious studies of what we ought to be about doing. And we're at that point again this year.
Well, and I've been through the budget, and believe me, if I could find any fat in this budget anywhere, I'd be the first one to make most of that we cut. But I can't find any fat in this. And as I told the sheriff, it hurts me that we can't give him everything that he wants, but he's several years behind, because things have changed, modern technology and this sort of thing, the units for the patrol cars, I believe you requested 16, right? And then we're going to fund eight this year, and we'll do that next year. And this will give us a rotation that we won't have to replace, all of them, and we're here. So we've talked about it, we've thought about this budget seriously, and I believe we've got a good budget.
Well, we had it a week, we got it a week ago, and...
Yeah, but I've been working on it.
Well, I put about 20 hours in it, along with my two full-time jobs outside of this, so I'm going through it too.
I will say that, just remember in regards to, just like any other business, when you hiring people is one of the things that will just keep on going. I know that's, you know, we're talking about sheriff's department and deputies, but that's one of the things that is a reality, you don't ever cut it once it's started, in regards to a person's position.
Well, and we're not rolling down by putting off after people. We had a request for how many?
We had a request for 18, funded a third of that, I thought it did fund in six. A third of that's going to sheriff's department, a third of that's going to search and services, two of the largest departments.
And there, another department, they requested acquisition, well, IT and HR. HR is facing a problem, maybe not this year, but sometime in the future, they've got one employee that has over 35 years of service. There won't be anybody on board to take over her job with the training that's necessary for that job. So about every department has a... There's another thing that has come to my mind also concerning an elected official. And we did a study, and Joe's did it for us, actually. Our register of deeds salary is far beneath what register of deeds in surrounding counties are getting. I don't know how you go about adjusting salary for an elected official, but that's only elected official, and her responsibilities with all the building and land changing and whatever has increased tremendously over the past year.
Can we get somebody to give us that information?
Where does all the deed transfer tax go to? Every deed that changes hands, 2% of the first thousand dollars is deed transfer tax. Doesn't that fund that area? Where does that money go?
That money comes back to the general fund, of course, that we're allowed to keep, and that is one of the few departments. If you look on page 36, page 35, that department is one, is the only department that fully covers itself and returns more than it costs, that 206, returning 249, almost 250,000 dollars back to the county, above and beyond the cost of the department. So those monies are accounted for, and they are recognized for that. It's a rare, it's a very rare occasion that you have a Monday department that brings in more money than the cost.
We had somebody find out what other...
They can take it up in finance.
Of course, I think it's already pulled it up, but we'll get it too.
Yeah, we've got that information, she might, I had it with her.
Just a minute of finance, I'm going to take a look at it. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to make this one statement, because I keep hearing how we don't want to use taxpayer money. You know, the program that Commissioner Lamont was talking about happens to be a program that people may benefit from that particular program are also taxpayers. They may not be in the bracket that some of us are in, but they're taxpayers too. And the money is not going for unworthy cause, it is to allow some individuals to maybe make it through the winter and sometimes summer. Sometimes it's a simple matter of hanging screens up so that you can open the window, fixing the pane, or doing the ceiling around the windows. I just think that all the money that we use, taxpayer money, and all the benefits that are being received or to taxpayers by some means, one way or another, so it would, it would be nice to hear occasionally that the only money we have belongs to taxpayers, and the only use we make of it is for taxpayers. That's the way I felt about it. Some just happen to live better than others, but also paying taxes.
It improves quality of life for some of those people too.
Well, it's necessary.
And it saves them money if they can memorize their house with windows that need replacing and this sort of thing. They not only live warmer, but they also cut out less money for their eating. And I know we mentioned AC, I believe, but we're not air conditioning in the houses. I don't believe.
Well, if they...
Might be things, but not...
It depends on the program.
It depends on the program itself.
It's already there.
If it's there, if it can be fixed, it's fixed. But in reference to what Commissioner Reeves was talking about, Commissioner Brown, what program here in Lee County, the workers are here in Lee County, they're hired right here in this county. So what money is appropriate to stay here in the county?
I'm not denying that they're not worthwhile causes, I'm just saying, you know, it really gets tough when you talk about improving quality of life, you know, where does personal responsibility come in, and where does, you know, nonprofit, where do nonprofits come in, where does the government's role come in? You know, it's a fine line there, and it's a difference a lot of times in, you know, political philosophy, so...
True, and it's just like former board member said a couple of years ago, we can have what we want, if we get rid of some of the things such as parks and recreations, if we get rid of, you know, senior services, you know, anything to do with that, there's several things that we could cut. But you got to think about what you just mentioned, the quality of life.
You know, with all due respect, and I don't have an axe to grind at any board member, but let me say to you that for years, we funded Temple, which I consider to be more of a luxury than anything else. But I don't deny that it isn't beneficial for this community. I don't deny that. But if it came down to whether I would do Temple or somebody's grandmother or an elderly or disabled person's home, which would I vote for? I'd do the home if I had to make that choice.
I just don't know what nonprofits are around that do that, you know, we've got...
That's why we gave you the list, and that's why you can pick up a phone, or you can take a trip over to the agency and find out what they do. I'm just not in here for general purpose instructions, I'm here to try and do the business of this board, citizens of this county, so. But sometimes I come in here, I'm not so sure that if it isn't campaign future, whatever it's, 2010, 12, or whatever it is, let's just get down to try and resolve and work with the money that we have in front of us, and let's try and give everybody fair consideration. There are some things that do merit, they do merit a second look, because not everyone or not, not either one of us can say for certain that we'd look at it one time and it's done, that's it, done. So some of these things will come back though, and we will have more discussion about it. And we're not trying to deny the public, a public hearing or public forum to address this budget.
Plus, our budget is valuable for inspection.
It doesn't have to be adopted until the end of June.
That's online. It is online. Right, Mr. Drum?
Excuse me one, one second, Mr. Chairman. I did ask, we had a manager that dealt with Department of Commerce and the Gators, Ms. Coe was here, she'll bring us up to date on where we are, so that we can get that resolved.
Uh, she pulled on there, or I guess twice, did I correct that? Trying to look at some resolved, some of the situation, actually finding out what she wanted out of us is the county. The only two items we see that needs to be done are the countertops in our house, which I think you can remember, a contractor went in and tried to replace them, the grout, it didn't match, and I got a low quota... the grout, it didn't match, and I got a low quote of two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for that.
To replace?
Yeah, countertops, two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, let, let me just say that I, I called the rehab specialist at Commerce and asked him exactly what Lee County was responsible for. Only the countertop is what they're asking to be taken care of, so they can remove these out, without funds, only the countertop. I heard you mentioned the second piece, but that may be something that came up.
There were shutters that were involved that were taken down during the process where you had to replace the windows. And I think the Owens would not fit, and the contractor hauled them off, and then she moved them back. And we got quotes on there that says she wouldn't shutters, uh, windows.
And so-
How much is it gonna take to satisfy this fate?
The countertops, two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, I guess.
We did move forward, please do it. This thing been going on since two thousand two.
That's correct.
What else have we got?
Uh, if the county wants to replace the shutters, we're nineteen thirty-eight, eight-four.
Do we have to? We don't have to.
Well, I think, first of all, it might need to address that, yeah. If that's something that's-
He said, evidently, they hauled them off.
Correct.
She wants them back. So if they gone, perhaps they can get up in the stall and be not sure.
It's gonna cost us more if we don't just go ahead and-
So she, she decided she wanted them back after she knew they were hauled off? Is that the situation?
Depending on the way everything-
We really don't know. I don't, we don't know. I think she thought all along they were gonna be put back there.
Yeah, there's twenty-five hundred in the budget remaining, which leaves us short about one thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. We have shutters in the county.
And that will take care of everything.
There were some damages to some furniture, but I'm not familiar with that at all.
Can you guys take care of it?
That's what we've been trying to do.
Do you seem to have an agreement at this point for those two items?
I mean, with her, uh, did, did she-
No, every time she bring up damage to the furniture.
Okay.
My thing is-
What's your recommendation?
Uh, replace the countertops and the shutters.
And have her sign something.
Tell your mugging.
If I can't get a contractor to go in-
Before you do it though, it needs to be a done deal before you go in there with her and say, "Look, if we do these two things, will you sign this and, and we'll get out of your life?"
Okay, I mean, would it be okay if we can go down with her and just offer her the money for the countertops and just walk away?
I don't know if it's gonna satisfy the state.
I'm scared that once we go, we end up with these two items.
I would think that if she signed, accepting satisfaction. By just taking the money and doing it herself, that's acceptable.
Mr. Hall, what do you think?
I've never, two or three times, she never would sign anything. I was, I said, "All I know we can do is take you to her and then report it to the state, whether you accept it or not."
The two things add together, how much is that worth?
Uh, four thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
What was the total spent on this whole project?
Um, I did not handle it, so I don't-
Does anybody know what the-
I'll make a motion.
There's two that you know.
I'll make a motion. We paid the three thousand four hundred and whatever it is.
Eighteen, uh, eighteen dollars.
And have, if, if she would accept that-
Four thousand four hundred and eighteen, I think.
And get her out.
Offer her the money. Any other further discussion? Tell all right the tolls, although they're remote, say aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
Tell your motion, Brad Dyer.
Uh, excuse me, you need the motion on the two thousand dollar increase that Mr. Lamont mentioned for community action.
No, we're, we're gonna keep that on the list of things.
Adjust the-
You're not gonna vote on this?
No, it's just like-
How much money they own?
The college should have been added back in, or whatever they-
The five thousand dollars for AC.
Right, right now I have, there's a couple other adjustments that have come up. There'll be a negative adjustment to the jail for the paper performance difference in what was originally in their budget and what ended up. We'll need to make an adjustment to the fire marshal's budget, but that'll be in that effect. Fire performance pay for that. We have received notice from the city that they want to go up on the rent for emergency management to eight dollars a square foot, and then increase the funding for heaven. So I've got a running list already that will summarize any work session that you had.
How much money is the state holding from us in regards to this case?
I really don't know. Is this another grant?
These are next work sessions. There's not been a set date for the next work session.
We will set the next work session after a lot of public hearings. Your motion, if you adjourn. Will that be a favor? Say aye. Any opposed, say no. Oh, man.
I speak P to the elders. My favorite place is to go, I don't know about things there, but-